That's okay. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's school committee meeting. May I have an approval of the agenda? So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to presentations and discussions in issues of interest. I'd like to welcome our 2017 National Merit Scholarship recipient and Mr. Bucky.
This is an annual joyful presentation that I get to give. I'll ask Sophie to come down as I'm telling you a little bit about the PSAT-NMSQT test. The NMSQT stands for the National Merit Scholarship Program. 1.6 million students took the PSAT-NMSQT test last October, Sophie among them. And she is one of 34,000 students selected from the 1.6 million that took the test to be commended by the PSAT group. And we're, as I said to her and her parents this evening, this is probably the first of many joyful presentations for Sophie in what has been a very impressive academic career. So I will hand her her certificate.
Congratulations.
And then I told her she would need to give the committee maybe a 10-second forecast of what she's intending to do for next year.
We'd like to congratulate you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Congratulations.
I'm applying to schools right now. I have a couple early action deadlines November 1st. But I'm planning on studying chemistry. And that's sort of my plans for now.
That's great.
I love that there's no plans beyond that. That's awesome.
Have you narrowed your search down to like New England or rural or city or what are you thinking?
Mostly New England and specifically Boston, but also a couple in California.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent work.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Very proud.
Very proud. You may go home and work on your homework if you'd like. Don't feel like you have to stay. All right. Moving on to our first quarter budget update. Martin.
Hello.
Hi.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
It feels like I presented the end of the year just two weeks ago.
I know. It does feel like that.
So as you've probably seen from the supporting documents and the chart attached, expenditures in fiscal year '17 are $1.235 million ahead of last year. Of note here is that the payroll expenditures are $773,000 over. But we did have seven bi-weekly payrolls happen in the first three months of this year as opposed to six last year. So we expect by the end of the second quarter that percentage of expended to budget will normalize. Right now it's about 3% more this year. 14% of budget have been expended on the payroll side as opposed to 11% last year. So I just wanted to point that out. On the operating side, we have a little over $685,000 more in forward commitments. And these are purchase orders that are created for anticipated expenses. And they are more this year than last year. So that's all they mean. They're anticipated future expenditures. So on the community side, Nantucket Community School, the first quarter, the revenues came $153,391 more in this fiscal year as compared to last year. We have to bear in mind that this year we have a $465,000 public appropriation coming from the town as opposed to $350,000 last year. So with that in mind, we're still seeing a healthy increase. There are several programs that have done well. The pool revolver has $5,000 increase in revenues. There is $17,000 increase in the summer camp. And there is $22,000 more this year received in the first quarter in extended day. So we hope this trend will continue throughout the fiscal year and we'll finish strong the year. Expenses were up $91,567. And then again, I want to point out here, the same thing as with on the school side, there were seven payrolls bi-weekly. And there was also a purchase of vehicle this year because the drivers at education vehicle was had maintenance, repair and maintenance issues. And so we have now purchased a new vehicle for the program for $26,000. You've probably seen it around. It's a new escape.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The school lunch program, the first quarter was great. The deficit is only $931. I think this is the lowest deficit I have seen quarterly deficit ever since I have done these presentations for the past year versus a deficit of $18,805 last year. It has decreased for several reasons, but mostly due to $17,874. Well, it has decreased by over $17,000 due to $16,894 increase in calculate free reimbursements. And those are driven by the free and reduced percentages. And they are at 33.2% this year as compared to 21.6% last year.
I wonder if that's a high percentage for our district on average. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen 33% of the third of the student body is free and reduced.
Yeah. We'll see how it is the second quarter, whether any random checks.
I don't think I've seen it that high in my tenure here.
Well, I also feel like the school's doing an amazing job at
Absolutely.
You know, reaching out to the families.
This year we did public announcement. You've probably seen the advertising in the newspaper. We did it in English and Spanish.
Absolutely.
We did public announcement on the town website as well. The application is also available there for download. So I don't know whether that has had
I'm sure. I'm sure it all worked.
I'm sure it has, yes.
But very positive is the fact that we see higher participation in the program this year. We have on average $511 more in sales, in sales per day in the current year as compared to last year. This year we operated for 19 days. Last year was 17. So that's why, as I mentioned, there are $18,882 meals served in fiscal year '17 as opposed to $15,453 last year. And again, the very low amount of the deficit gives us hope that we'll remain below the budgeted subsidy of $55,379 for this year. And as you may remember, last year we finished at $38,777, which was a very good result compared to prior years.
Thank you very much, Martin. Any questions?
A lot of numbers.
Zona?
No, no questions here.
No questions, Melissa?
No. I just, I'd love to give a shout out to Linda. I'm sure she works very hard with you on that coordinated effort to get the free and reduced applications out there for families. And I know that she's always keeping an eye out on the students who have the most need. So thank you to Linda for that, too.
She has done an amazing job. And also I would like to congratulate Sarah Erickson, who just started. She's been, she has done amazingly well in the short period of time. She did train with Sarah Holgate before she left, but she has taken over and she's
Excellent.
She's done a great job, so.
Good. Good teamwork. Pauline?
I'm good.
Thank you very much, Martin.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to our ESL update. Jeremiah?
Would you like to sit in front?
Sure.
Let us sit.
We would.
Thank you again for having me up here and giving me this platform to report on all the great things that our English learners are doing at Nantucket Public Schools. Before I get to our local report, President Obama repealed the No Child Left Behind and then we've adopted the Every Student Succeeds Act. And one of the main changes that affects us is in the never-ending parade of acronyms, English Language Learners are now shortened to English Learners. So the SIMS data moniker, Limited English Proficient, is now EL, just an English learner. So FLEP is obsolete, Former English Learner, Former Limited English Proficient. So those are now FEL students. So we'll be talking about FELs instead of FLEPs. So we'll start
Did you do that just to test us?
You're right, right.
Every five years. I think it's changed every five
The acronyms are always changing. So here's our enrollment report as of October 1st. And there are several reasons that we did not have a real significant increase between October 1st last year, primarily because we exited so many students from our program. We exited 30 students, 19 at the elementary school, 10 at the middle school, and one at the high school. Another factor was that we lost 17 students from the high school. So several of them, about five, I believe, dropped out last year. But these English learners moved for various reasons throughout the year. Some come back. We've gotten a few back. But we lost 17 high school students since October 1st last year, in addition to the 30 students who exited the program. Here is the historic enrollment. And you can see the last three years are significantly higher than anything we've ever experienced, the big jump there between 2013 and 2014. In a graph form, it's just really pretty striking that we are now 255 and growing. I believe we've got about nine new students since October 1st at all three schools. Here's the breakdown by what grade they're in. You can see obviously the primary group is at the elementary school. The high school is a little bit larger, but that number's been fluctuating. And this is a statistic that I thought would interest the committee. Take a look at the percentage of student population that English learners are on Nantucket compared to the state average. If you'll see, the Massachusetts average is 9% there, roughly 9%. And that stayed pretty consistent over the past year or two. The elementary school is well over double that. And as a district, we are almost double that. So I think it's important when you talk about comparable districts to realize that there really is nothing like Nantucket. And there's another slide later in the presentation. Here's the data from 2012 in terms of the state percentage versus ours. And you can see that the gap is just continuing to widen here in the past two or three years. We are very fortunate that we have a very diverse population here at the public schools. We have students from 12 different countries, 11 languages represented. And I thought I'd put up this slide to show you that there are many, many students who are bilingual that are not English learners. They've either come through our program and exited, or they've arrived with bilingual capabilities. So this is what it looks like in a graph form. These are all students at Nantucket Public Schools. You can see that we're predominantly Spanish besides our English-speaking population with Portuguese in third place. And this is what the breakdown of English learners looks like. We are at almost 87% Spanish. And then again, the next significant population is Portuguese speakers. This is, and I don't want to apologize right now to the other group. That's such an awful category. Other could be Native Americans. It could be a lot of our Asian students who come from India, Nepal, or Tibet. It could be Hawaiian islanders, for example, or Native Alaskans. So there's a lot of people in this other basket. But if you look, you see that it's steadily increased. The minority population is now almost 42% of the school population. And the Hispanic population is over a quarter of our student body. Pretty significant if you ask me. Just as a refresher, these are the two components of instruction of EL, of English Learners in Massachusetts as mandated by the Department of Education. The ESL, which is delivered by the English Language Learner Teachers Instruction in English as a Second Language. And then the Sheltered English Instruction, which is happening in all core academic classes after 2013. This was the stimulus for the retail initiative. And as you can see here, we've had five retail classes offered here at the public schools, including the administrators' class. So 91 core academic teachers and nine administrators earned their SEI endorsements here through our retail offerings. And then there's also an additional 19 teachers who have their endorsement either through their ELL license or came to us with that endorsement. I could not be more pleased about the staff that we have this year. And I see some of the staff here to support me tonight. I sure appreciate that. We've hired a couple new teachers at the elementary school. Kate Barbe is brand new. Janet Giles comes to us from the fourth grade team, formerly known as Janet Colby before her marriage. Veteran teachers Tina Fournier, who is here, please stand Tina, her least way to the folks. And Vessi Nachava. And then Nicole Ridge, who is in her third year now. And Nicole does primarily kindergarten. And of course Patricia Harding, who many of you know and appreciate the work that she does at the elementary school. She's just been fantastic and continues to help us with our Spanish-speaking population. At the middle school, we've gone to two full-time ELL teachers. Catherine Kennedy Norton, who you all know from her work in the French department formerly at Nantucket High School. She was also a Spanish teacher. She's a qualified interpreter, translator. And Jessica Truela is brand new to our system. She came to us from Maine. She's teaching sixth grade English learners at the middle school. At the high school, Henry O'Rourke came to us after about 30 years in Hollyoke. And Shawnee Webster, now in her second year here at Nantucket Public Schools after experience teaching abroad. I had never put Jackie Etcheverria into this presentation, but I really wanted to mention the work that she's doing with our English learners at the high school this year. A second heritage language class was created in order to build literacy skills in our Spanish-speaking population. Jackie reports that many of our Spanish-speaking ELLs have a very, very low level of literacy in their native language, so that they are struggling to learn how to read and write, specifically in Spanish. And you can imagine how that compounds their learning English. So I really wanted to shout out to Jackie. She's also been very active with the students in terms of organizing student organizations. And in fact, this Thursday night at 6:00 PM in the high school cafeteria, there'll be a celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. Please come for, you know, some piñatas and a good time in Spanish. And then my job at the district level, and Eileen Tavares at the front office in the high school, who's been great in terms of intake of families, processing registrations. And she does de facto guidance counseling for a lot of Spanish-speaking students who cannot communicate with the guidance staff at the high school. So Eileen's been tremendous. Before I get to the data slides, I just want to sort of preface that. The number of students is constantly changing. We don't have the same students from year to year. We lose students for various reasons, including exiting them from the program. But we also get beginner students mostly every year, too. So while the number of students may stay roughly the same, the makeup of those students changes every year. So it's very, very difficult to get actual qualitative data on this group of students. But I just want to repeat that most newly enrolled ELLs come with a very, very low level of English proficiency or none at all. So let's jump into the data. And this is what I really want to celebrate. I spoke to the elementary school faculty at their meeting a couple weeks ago. And this is a historic look at the access scores from the elementary school over the past four years. And you can see how in 2013, we primarily had the majority of our students at very low levels of proficiency, at levels one, two, and at three. And if you work through the progression and you look to see where we were last year, we are primarily at the upper three levels of proficiency. So I think this, while it's not highly qualitative, it does give you a good picture of the progress that our students are making thanks to the good work of not only the ELL teachers, but the general ed staff at the elementary school to promote literacy and English language learning and academic achievement. So I'm going to run through, I have slides for every grade. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them. If you have a question about a specific grade, you may want to stop and ask rather than wait to the end. So again, we started with grade three here because this is the only, you know, the lowest class that we have, three years of consecutive data. And this is really a great picture of what we can do if we get these students from the beginning. Because you see when they come in kindergarten, how low their proficiency is. We have, what, 19 students here at very low level one or no English proficiency. And look where they are by the time they're in third grade. They're all the way to levels four and five and doing great things in the classroom. So this is a great celebration, the elementary school. And I'll talk about that later with the Park and the MCAS PPI data. But I'm just really thrilled with the work that the elementary school is doing over the past couple of years. And the staff there deserves all the credit for that. So again, as we go up, here's grade four. And you can see the progression in 2014. They're primarily at a level three. And now they're, you know, they've worked their way up through levels four and five. And like I say, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these, but I just wanted to show you the history for each grade level. And I'm happy to come back to these if you have questions on the end. So here's the middle school data over the past four years. You can see we had a very small number of English learners in my next to last year. This was my last year in the classroom. And you can see now, last year, thanks to the work that's happening at the elementary school, when we get these sixth graders, they come at a high level of proficiency. But the middle school staff is also doing great work to promote their English development. So if we look at grades six, seven, and eight, you see the same trend. The progression is towards higher levels of proficiency. And the students do progress in their English learning. Grade seven. And then this is this year's eighth grade. So those are the prior three years for the middle school. The high school data tells a different story. If you look at the last two years, you can see that not only do we have a much larger number of students, but when they arrive, they're primarily here in the low proficiency levels. So we have a lot of high school students who come at very low levels of proficiency. Usually if they've been in our program, they'll have exited services either late in elementary school or towards the end of middle school. And then the high school students are enrolled with, you know, little English, no academic experience like we're used to really. So you can see that their scores are generally very low on the access. We'll go through grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. So not much to tell from grade nine, except that you see the five students, there were four at the lower two levels last year. Same thing with last year's grade nine students there. A lot of low beginners in levels one and two. Again, with grade 10, last year predominantly at the low levels of proficiency. And these are, this was last year's graduating class. And if you look there, I'm sorry, this was last year's 11th grade. This is the current senior class. You look and you see most of the kids are at low levels of proficiency. So we wanted to include this slide also. You would imagine that an older student might have a higher level of English proficiency, but that's not always the case. We see they come in kindergarten, they have a very low level of proficiency, and they progress through elementary school all the way up to grade four and five where we exit the program. Then again, in sixth grade, you see that influx of beginners brings the average down. And then if you take a look at grade nine, that really gives you a good picture of who the English learners are at the high school, especially in ninth grade, with a very low level of proficiency. And you can imagine the challenges that presents for their teachers. So if I had asked you before I started the presentation, who had a higher English proficiency level on average, grade nine or grade eight, you know, the answer probably would have not been grade nine. So it's just something to think about in terms of their overall proficiency and the newcomers, how that affects the average. This is last year and 2015's Park data. I have the numbers in subsequent slides. But you can see the progress we've made. In 2015, we had over 70% of our students performing at the lowest two levels, partially met or did not meet. And we've reduced that number by almost 20%. And if you look also at the high end there, we had only about 5% that were above level four. And now we're almost to 20% that are above level four. So good things are happening at the high school. I don't want to not convey that message, but their challenges are significantly different than those at the elementary school.
Jeremiah, these are grades three through eight.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Right. Park was administered through grades three through eight. Here's your math score. And it's not quite as striking as the English, but you can see the same trends. 75% in the lower two levels. Again, we've dropped that by about 20% down to 55-ish. And again, less than 5% it looks like here, and now almost 20% at the higher two levels. So there is progress in academic achievement and accountability. Here are the hard numbers for the Park. And these are grades three through eight. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in the title of both prior two slides. But if you look at the progress between 2015 and 2016, start with math. You've got, what, 85 kids there in the lower two categories. And last year, what's that, only 54? So we've really reduced that. And then if you look over at the other end, we only had five kids that met expectations or exceeded them two years ago, but last year we had 18. So there is progress there. Same thing with the English. You can see we've really moved the kids out of the did not yet meet or partially met at the bottom two levels. English is a little tricky because, you know, you're writing paragraphs and essays and it's not as, well, it's just different than the access test. So all those literacy elements come into play. I'm disappointed that Dr. Lepreys not here tonight because I put this chart in here just for him about the former English learners, right? Not FLEPs. They're FELs now. I mean, doesn't really sound good, but. And you can see in 2016, they all succeeded. So they were all, the FELs were at the higher levels of achievement in the Park, in the MCAS, I'm sorry, in the Park test, grades three through eight. Grade 10 MCAS, again, the same thing. I've broken it down by English learners and former English learners. You can see that the former English learners are performing really well, especially in the biology there. The biology, we all know, has been an issue. And it's really good to see that the kids who have exited our English learner program, the FELs, are succeeding on these standardized assessments. In terms of the PPI and the proficiency gap, while we are still below target, we have made significant gains. If you look at the English, you know, that's almost 25 points there. What is it? Yeah, almost 20 points there. You can see that there is progress happening. We're still below target, but I think those are good numbers. Those are good gains. And I predict even more improvement next year.
Jeremiah, can you just remind us what the proficiency number is? What the proficiency target is?
I can. So they change for each one. The target CPI for English is 80.5. The target CPI for math is 73.1. And for science is 62.5. So while we still are below target, we're moving in the right direction. And if you think we're going to make another almost, you know, 20-point jump next year, we could be approaching that.
We could be approaching that. That's exactly what I was thinking. Thank you.
Something really worth celebrating was the English language growth, especially at the elementary school. We are above the target there. We made our CPI gain on the student growth percentile. And we have never, as far as I know, in my 14 years here, we have never received bonus points for English learners' performance on any standardized assessment. So this is huge news. And I celebrated this, like I said, with the elementary school a few weeks ago. But we got these bonus points for moving students out of the lower two categories into the more proficient categories. So again, kudos to the elementary staff for these gains. I wanted to sort of end the presentation with a look at comparable districts because we have such unique challenges here on Nantucket. I just want to make sure everybody sort of drinks in these numbers. Martha's Vineyard is not included in our dart analysis as a comparable district. Martha's Vineyard is not included in our dart analysis as a comparable district, but we wanted to include that to show you what our sister island is experiencing. If you look at Nantucket, again, almost sixteen percent last year of the total enrollment, there is nothing even close to that. And we put Vineyard in there because it's somewhat close, but it's still, you know, nearly half of the enrollment that we have. So we're being compared against a lot of districts who don't have the geographical challenges of, you know, retaining quality instructors and, you know, there's no place like Nantucket, we know that. But it's really striking to me when you see how greater our percentage of enrollment is than a lot of these districts that we're being compared to.
Jeremiah, do you communicate with anybody at the state level about that demographic information? And, I mean, I would imagine, even if it was just from an academic curiosity standpoint, there is a lot to be learned from or tested on some assumptions they're making about serving the L population.
Well, I am in communication with them. I go to quarterly directors' meetings, and I also go to Title III directors' meetings. So I'm in contact with them. They're aware of our challenges. I don't think they appreciate them the way that we do, but, you know, they're aware of It's tough. It's tough, you know, the Nantucket, everybody thinks of Nantucket as a pretty privileged, you know, elite place, and they don't understand that we do have this population here.
And these numbers, I mean, are so glaring. I would imagine they'd be really interesting. And I know we're going to see a shift in elected leadership, but I would imagine for our state legislature and state senators to know what we are dealing with in comparison to neighbors that we're often compared to. This is really important information.
I can't say enough about how great a job we're doing, given the obstacles that we face. No one has experienced growth like this in the state in the past three years. To see our population more than double, that's remarkable. You know, the only other districts that can compare to these kind of growth numbers are big, you know, big city urban districts like Lawrence or Lowell, but those districts already have a sizable population of English learners. So we went from a handful to, you know, almost three hundred. I bet we'll be at three hundred in the next few years. The ELL staff, like I said, I couldn't be more pleased. I think we are now finally fully staffed as far as English language teachers go, with five at the elementary school, two at the middle school, and two at the high school. Their work goes far beyond what I've written here on this slide. Whenever students come in, we assess them for proficiency. We run formative assessments on them all during the year. We deliver the WEDA Access 2.0 in January. We deliver the ALT access to those students who are cognitively unable to take the MCAS or they take an alternate access. So we're always assessing these students. We're documenting what they're doing. Every teacher has a file in their room designated for each student in addition to the guidance file. So we keep a running sort of documentation of what these students are achieving, their test scores, but more than that, some of their authentic work and how they develop as an English learner. The monitoring of former English learners and students who have opted out of our program has now been extended from two years to four by the Every Student Succeed Act. And the Next Generation ESL Curriculum Project, we were invited by the state through some work that I did to participate in the first ELL curriculum writing workshop this summer. I was at Falmouth. We sent two teachers over, and they are currently working within our department to develop an ELL curriculum. This is about a two-year project that's been going on through the Department of Education in conjunction with WEDA and MatSal. And, you know, I was really pleased to be able to send those teachers this summer and really try to hammer out a good ELL curriculum district-wide. We're also working on identifying English learners with special needs. We're going to a workshop on the Cape in November. We were fortunate to have some more bilingual staff in the sped department, but this is a growing population of English learners with disabilities, and this is something that's not easy to identify in monolingual staff. So it's great to have bilingual teachers, but it's also great to be exposed to these workshops where they hear about best practice from other districts and from state leaders.
Jeremiah, I'm sorry, would you know an estimated number of students who are identified as both ELL and special needs?
I would say probably around a dozen maybe or less. I would have to ask Mrs. Miller on that one.
You know, I was actually gonna, because we've just increased a few students in our preschool that are bilingual, and they may not be coming up on your access because you're not starting that in the preschool. So I would make it more between fifteen and twenty.
Okay. So it's growing? Yes, it's growing. And I can find some exact numbers for you if you'd like.
That's, don't worry about it. I just was curious what percentage we were talking about. It's been an area of focus of mine over the past several years, watching the numbers go up and understanding the challenge that, you know, how do you provide services and even identify students when you've already got a significant barrier? So I'm happy to see the number of students being identified increasing because I think whatever we're learning and doing is working.
Right, right. So identifying them is the first step, and then providing services for them is the big piece. The other thing that we're doing as an ELL staff is really trying to support the content and the core academic teachers as they implement sheltered English immersion. Our ELL teachers are expert at strategies and methodology to make their content comprehensible so any mainstream teacher can call on the ELL staff and they're building as a resource. And then finally, and this shouldn't be the last thing, but it should be the first thing, is that we're really working with our parent advisory council, and thank you to Maria Partita for coming tonight to support us. I haven't asked her to present anything, but she can present in the springtime as she has in the past years. But the parent advisory council's been phenomenal. They've been really trying to get students to organize and advocate for themselves. And especially at the high school, there's a lot of work through an organization called the United States Hispanic Leadership Institute, thanks to Maria. So some of our students are really trying to take ownership and leadership within the community, and that's just been fantastic. The other thing is that we're really trying to work with people in the community. Patricia and Eileen and I go to the community provider meeting once a month to work with family and children's services. We had the hospital representatives come in to talk about registering for health insurance last week at the PAC meeting. We're really trying to outreach to the Hispanic community in terms of services that are available to them on island, but also to bring them in to work with us in, you know, in combination to support their students. And that's the hardest piece, is A, because many families are so busy working, B, because it's not really culturally part of how they do school. So that's always a challenge, but without Maria, we'd be way back at square one. So thank you, Maria, and, you know, the PAC meetings are just, they're just fun, I think, because it brings everybody in to talk about the kids, and everybody loves to talk about their kids. Questions? I think that's about it. I'm sure there was a lot to cover there, but please, if, you know, waiting for Dr. Lepre to ask about those fells, but I guess someone else will have to step.
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you guys for last spring, the burger we had. I was there, and it was completely in Spanish. And I want to say, I think I gotta, I gotta look into their world and how it feels to be in our world. It was completely in Spanish, but thank God for seeing you were super nice and next to me, my personal interpreter. But it was a wonderful event. The food was fantastic, and the people so warm and welcoming, and it was phenomenal speaker.
Well, we sure appreciated having you there. She's talking about the ELL fair that we held in June, right after school ended. Maria brought Veronica Robles and her mariachi band. We had some motivational speakers. The Cuban guy spoke. He was great to get the students motivated. And then just like Mrs. Butler said, just to bring everyone together to celebrate the community and to really work together to support the students. And thank you again, you know, it was great to see you there and see, you know, put yourself in the shoes of an English learner where you're sitting in a room full of people speaking another language, and you're just trying to, you know, pick out a few things you can hold on to, so.
Bush dancing.
Oh, yeah. He made everything go.
That's right, we all did. We all did. So that again was a result of the work of the parent advisory council, and Maria Partita especially was instrumental in getting that night up, and it was great.
A couple of questions. I'm going to ask a question, but I think you're actually going to add that into your answer to my second question. But guidance, we've talked about this before when you presented, with a quarter of our population being EL students. Where can we, can we improve in our support for students who, and I'm not just talking necessarily on the mental health piece, I'm talking about how do we build goals and how do we have the conversations that are culturally accepted or prudent for this population to what are their goals after high school?
Right.
It's great that you've done the achievements and we're doing so well, but who's having those conversations? And if not, should we be having those?
Well, thank you for asking that question because there are two parts to my answer. Yes, we can do better. And I think that it's important for students to see people that, A, look like them, and B, speak their language when they're dealing with the staff at their school. So Mr. Cozor, this is no surprise to him, I've asked for Spanish-speaking guidance counselors in the past, and I continue to ask for them every year. So yes, we can, we can offer them better support. You know, we're doing our best. You know, the guidance office has been great in working with me specifically. I'll go in to help students, and like I say, they naturally are drawn to Eileen because she understands what they're talking about immediately. So the language barrier is one that's not easily overcome, but it's great that we are aware that they have those needs, and it's incumbent on us to improve. You're right. So I'm hopeful that we can get a Spanish-speaking guidance counselor. Definitely at the high school would be my first recommendation, as you say, for college planning and just for graduating, because a lot of these students really are struggling to figure out the credit system and how to enroll in the right classes. So we're improving, but we can do better. The other thing that you touched on briefly is the mental health issue, and I think that, you know, we had the One Book One Island program last year where we read Enrique's journey. But I don't think any of us really understands how much trauma some of these children are experiencing before they enroll in our school. And I think that some of the things that they see are unspeakable, some of the violence that they may have witnessed is horrible. So I would hope that in addition to, you know, increasing the Spanish-speaking cadre of guidance counselors, that we can also find sometime in the near future some Spanish-speaking social worker just for counseling purposes, especially, you know, some of these very young students at the elementary school. Some of the things they've witnessed are horrendous, you know? And that's not to say that there aren't other traumas that the high school students have experienced, but yes, and thank you for asking, it's something that we can definitely improve on, but we're aware of that and we're working towards that. It's no secret to Mr. Cozor.
So the second part of my question, and I celebrate with you the accomplishments of the program, I'm not putting that aside, but going forward, where, other than guidance and mental health support, if you could have your wish, and I know everybody probably cringes when we say this, but it should be, let's look at the big picture going forward for next year. What are some of the highlights for you?
So we've already taken a few steps in that direction, and I want to commend the high school and Dr. Bucky especially here for creating three classes at the high school that are geared specifically to low-level English learners. We have an SEI Biology section. He's granted permission to split the Biology class into two so that students with very little or no scientific background can succeed in Biology and pass the MCAS. In math, there's a pre-algebra, I believe it's a SEI Math taught by a teacher who is actually duly certified in math and ELL at the high school. And then there's also a 21st Century Writing Skills class at the high school taught by Jamie Coratek, and he is doing a phenomenal job with those students. I mean, they're engaged. Every time I walk by there, they're enjoying class, and that's not something I've seen, you know, in the past as much. So yes, continue to provide sheltered instruction. I think that's where most of our work needs to be done right now, is how do the content teachers instruct these students? How can they make their content comprehensible without teaching in Spanish? Because since two thousand and two, question two passed, it's instruction all in English in Massachusetts. So we can, we can work to support those mainstream teachers as they incorporate these students into their classes. So that's where I would go with that, is just to provide more for our content teachers and assist them to make their content accessible for students who don't speak our language.
That's great to learn that about the high school. I didn't know that with the Biology and the English.
So more of that, and, you know, especially a newcomer program, I think, is something. We see a lot of kids come at various levels, various grade levels, but very low proficiency. So we may want to think about, especially with the guidance around students with limited or interrupted formal education, about just a place for the students to land that's safe and they can begin to learn how to do school and even just, you know, go to class because it's foreign to a lot of students.
You bring up, when you say the newcomer, I immediately went to, again, going back to the Rachel's Challenge during the presentation, one of the things that the schools put in place with newcomer, so they would be paired with a student, with whatever school they were in, they would have a student that they either shadowed, or they would have three or four during the day in high school, where they would go to the different classes with those students, and it gave them someone to sit and have lunch with.
Right.
It gave them somebody to ask a question to, you know, where do I go next or where this room is? And I, we had had a conversation, I thought maybe a year or two back, of institute some kind of program so that we could have all of our students, not just our EL students coming in, but all of our new students. So I'm wondering where, if we're doing that in the school, and are you aware of that happening with the EL students?
I think that's a great idea and a good suggestion. A lot of our English learners maybe already know some students that are here or gravitate to them when they get here. So we don't have that in place per se, but I think that's a great idea.
I think, I think that we do that in many cases. I know in the elementary school, when they place new children to this country, they're strategic in the classrooms that they place the children with, knowing that there are others. I think this actually has become less of a problem as our numbers have grown.
Yes.
Because there are more children at varying levels of proficiency that you can put them with. Probably five years ago, six years ago, it was a greater problem because you didn't have the numbers in every classroom that you do today. So it's kind of an interesting advantage that's occurred with the growth that has occurred. But I think, I think that you would find, and I mentioned the elementary school because I know of a particular child that's come recently in the placement. I suspect it's the same at the middle school as well. Whether you identify one child or not, maybe that's not happening, but I think you're conscious in the placement of other children who can support that child.
Right. And I know from my experience at the middle school that oftentimes they'll shadow a student for the first week or so, so they get the routine and they make one friend right away.
But I may also just sort of add on that maybe as a district, we should have the responsibility of making sure that there are some students that are kind of responsible, if you will, because I think kids are shy. And so it's okay if they already know each other through the family connections, but if they're not, unless a student realizes, realizes that's their role or we're asking them to take that on, some kids might want to ditch them after the first class because they think they got it. You know what I mean?
I do, I do. And I think that may be something that the usually group might want to consider, the high school students, that sounds like it's a perfect thing for that student organization, maybe to start designating some welcome, you know, ambassadors or just some, you know, some high school guides or whatever school.
Putt lucks who can get to go with the families.
Right. So I think you'll see a lot of them on Thursday night at the Hispanic Heritage Celebration.
Anyway, that's, I'm fine. Thank you.
I just, you may have already answered this in the more support for content teachers in terms of sheltered instruction, but looking at the numbers in the high school of level one, level two, level three learners, and that being fairly school of level one, level two, level three learners and, and that being fairly consistent last year and this year, those numbers. What, is that the only resource that we need to address? I'm thinking of, you know, when we, when we identified issues of incoming elementary school students, Summer Boost was born and here we have probably 14 to 15, maybe even 16-year-old students coming in with limited education exposure, formal education exposure, limited literacy in their native language. Is there, what more can we do to help them in that transition? Is there a model like a Summer Boost program that we keep them that long?
So we've, so we've had this, we've had this discussion more than once and with Dr. Lepary, you know, I actually tried through the Title III funding to increase our summer school offerings to incorporate high school students last summer. No one took us up on it.
Yeah.
They're so, they're so eager to get out there and make money that that's the real draw. Either that or they have family responsibilities. We have increased our Title III funded summer program, you know, steadily for the past three years, so we're getting those kids in elementary and middle school. But you're right, the high school kids, they, they're facing sort of a different reality than the younger kids because they're here sort of as breadwinners as well for their family, you know, not just being students. And a lot of them are here only to get the English so that they can go to work. So it's certainly a discussion worth having, you know, I welcome any other input from, from anyone here, but that is the toughest sort of group, those older teenage kids to really involve in any of our programs.
Thank you very much, Jeremiah. This is great information. Thank you very much. Thanks to your team.
Yes, thank you.
Michael's not here, so are you going to?
No, I, I actually, if I could just echo your thanks to Jeremiah, we are in a far different and better place than we were six years ago in our service to our ELL students. And he has given credit rightly to the staff, but I certainly would give Jeremiah a lot of credit for systematizing some of the things that we needed to do and now are doing consistently from, from entry through to, I can't say flip anymore, fell. So, you know, I, I certainly want to thank Jeremiah for his effort and, and he's right. The, the staff, the ELL staff in particular are, are hard at it modifying and doing whatever to help these children make gains. So, so thanks, Jeremiah. Michael is not here and I'm carrying the ball. This is usually, you know, a one-minute conversation. It's just to give you the, the homeschooling numbers. You can see how they compare over the, these three years. We only have four students this year and that's pretty consistent with what we've had for the, the past several years. You don't tend to have as many usually in the upper grades because once they reach a certain age, they don't have to report as homeschooled. So that typically, typically changes.
Thank you. Any questions on the homeschooling report? Sona, do you have any questions or? Any comments from the public tonight? All right. That's great. I'm just going to wait for Melissa to return before we continue on with our votes. Thank you for waiting.
You're welcome.
All right. May I have a motion for approval for the overnight cultural field trip to Boston for NHS Spanish, Latin and Chinese Club on November 4th and 5th, 2016? Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the gift donation from the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to NHS Library for a die-cut machine in the amount of $500?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Meeting minutes from October 4th. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the transfers and invoices?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sona, do you have a question?
No.
Sorry. Okay. Sorry. All right. Superintendent's report, calendar update.
Yes, I've given you the survey results we did as you asked and put out the word to people to respond, but I think we've probably had another 200 responses since I gave you the results last time. 310 of, of all the, those reporting, 310 preferred the two separate weeks, 178 a combined two-week vacation. And then if, you can see from the responses from staff, it's even more overwhelming to have, have two separate weeks.
I'm not understanding that way. Is that right? It says two separate weeks, no, this column, yes, this column.
Okay. So it's, it was no to?
The question.
The question.
No to combine.
Which was to, to combine.
It was confused.
It's confusing what's written.
Okay.
But I, I do thank you, Mike, and the team so much for pushing that out. I think 488 responses is a great sampling of our population of parents and it feels like a good number to say, okay, we asked.
Yes, we did. We'll ask again next year like we did last, right? We'll get the same crazy. I had so many parents say, didn't you just ask this question last year?
What do you think, Mike? We'll do this in any basis.
I think that you should read all of these before you ask to do it.
All right. That's a good response. Fair response.
Seriously, thank you for doing that.
Yes. Thank you very much and thank you, Logan.
And I do know that parents did appreciate being asked and having the opportunity to have it out there, so.
And thank you administrators who pushed it again, one last time. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll bring the 17, 18 calendar for a vote at the next meeting, but I just figured I'd give you a report on this. And then on the horizon, again, we're, we're in good shape. We're entering budget season, so you know, we'll, we'll give you a budget forecast and start talking about some of the federal grants that we have. And we, I did send you a copy right before the meeting today of the budget calendar. We'll bring that to you at the next meeting for your approval as well. And then at, at some point, there was some discussion about, I think the school committee was looking to have a, a forum or some kind of opportunity to talk about the prom.
Yes.
I don't know if, if that is something that you still would like to do. I don't think that that needs to be at a school committee meeting. If, if that is your wish, that would be, you know, we would direct Dr. Bucky to conduct that among the students, I suspect, and the, and the parents, if that is.
And have changes been made to who's allowed to go to prom already this year?
Yes, I have heard multiple.
Well, you can.
Yeah, this, this is a total blindside for me. I met with the junior class officers about three weeks ago.
Okay.
We discussed it as a full faculty, first faculty meeting in October.
Okay.
And I saw it as a resolved issue that prom would be open to only juniors and seniors.
That's, that's kind of what I'm saying is that if there's already a, a resolved issue, then, then perhaps the forum is not necessary.
Okay. I, I wasn't aware, but you had made this decision.
I'm not, I'm not sure that I was aware, so.
That was the first time I heard of that as well. I thought it was just juniors, that's why I was pushing the forum.
Okay.
Well, one, one thing that did come up tonight, if, if it's juniors and seniors, I also understand that there is a formal.
Winter formal.
A winter formal.
They can put in a proposal for one.
A proposal for one. Okay.
A winter formal for grades nine through 12 or?
It's a school dance.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay.
May I just ask a question on that regarding that?
The prom?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, it would be directed to Dr. Bucky.
Sure.
Because I think you've got the answers. I, I wasn't aware either for the junior, senior, so junior and seniors can go to the junior prom. Are they allowed if they are dating a sophomore or a freshman to get permission to bring them as a, okay. All right. Thank you.
Even the freshmen? If they're invited by a junior?
It's not open for all four classes to invite them.
Gotcha.
And that's the, the change.
That's great.
So we don't need to do a forum?
No. All right. And who's, who's sponsoring the winter formal application? Student council?
Yeah, yeah. I was going to talk about that.
Okay. Well, you can tell me about it. I'll save my question.
So is your question still, do we want to do a conversation on student dress, student uniform?
Uh huh. It was something we, we had discussed.
We did talk about, yep.
And with the opening of the Nantucket Intermediate School, it seems like a good time to have, to continue the discussion.
So are you suggesting, Mr. Cozor, that this would be something that we do maybe in conjunction with the school council and not have this at a school committee meeting? We'll just invite, and maybe we could do it through the student council too?
I think I was simply saying that a, a topic such as these two wouldn't be appropriate for a school committee meeting, in my opinion, that they're better addressed at the, at the building level. If you wish to have a forum that would invite parents from all three, you, you need to give us direction of what you are seeking from the administration.
I would recommend that maybe we have a small work group that's formed to come up with some recommendations of a proposal on what we would, what our, our hopes and dreams would be about implementing a student dress code so that we have some substance to ask the community.
Very appropriate.
As opposed to just how do you feel about that? But I think based on our last conversation that we did have a presentation, conversation on some really good ideas were brought forward, so a work group may be made up of two school committee members and some admin and maybe student could, could roll up their sleeves and come up with a suggestion. And based on that, we could move forward and getting some feedback on that.
I have a question. How does student council get feedback from your constituents?
Like your peers?
Like for me, for example, I'm one of the four student council members for the senior class and I, I usually ask questions in our Facebook group. I know it's kind of 21st century, but yeah, I usually say, oh, like for example, we want, we didn't know if we wanted to change tie-dye day because people are kind of confused, so and we're like, oh, well, let's change it to color day and we'll get, we got a huge consensus and then all four grades asked their grades and they said, let's change it, so.
So that Facebook group has all of your seniors?
Yeah, all of the seniors in it. And then if they don't, if the senior doesn't have Facebook, then we talk to them like, in text or something. 21st century, you know.
So I'm not, I don't want to come across the wrong way, but I'm going to push you a little bit further so that I understand and the administration understands what a work group is and who the work group is and whether they are going out into the constituencies or whether they are working together first.
I don't feel pushed. I feel like you're asking a question.
Okay.
Just to be clear.
Yeah.
But I, you know, I think that's something for this, for us to decide, but in previous iterations of work groups, usually they're representatives of certain constituencies and I think we could make some informed decisions and recommendations based on that. But certainly if there was an impasse or a question, I mean, I think the question is, do we want to have a student dress policy? And if we do, what would that look like? And if, what does it look like and when does it roll out?
So we do have a student dress policy.
I'm sorry. If we want an amended uniform to include a uniform.
Uniforms? That's what you guys are talking about.
Just check out our Facebook page.
You want, you want some feedback? It's going out.
But I think, you know, for example, one of the recommendations that came to us at the conversation we had, and I don't, I don't feel like I particularly carry a torch for this topic, so I don't want to be the only person that speaks on it, but that there was an, an idea put forward that whatever a uniform is defined as, you have flexibility in that definition and then we would also have flexibility in how we rolled that out. So perhaps starting at the elementary school level so that the student population as they matriculate up gets more familiar and comfortable with that. So not that in January, suddenly the seniors would have to wear, you know, navy polos every day and gingham dresses. But that I think to, in my opinion, a work group, an idea or proposal has to come forward before we go to any kind of conversation. And I, I'm not sure that we even have any consensus from the administration and the school committee on what that policy would look like, what that uniform policy would look like. So I'm just simply thinking, a work group is a way to get some definition around it.
So the whole issue of enforcement aside, which I've shared with you is not insignificant.
Absolutely.
Yeah, piece of that. My recommendation might be that you have a school council member from each level along with a, a, two school committee members and, and an administrator from each school and probably a representative from the high school student council.
Great.
I don't think that there's an active middle school student council now.
There is. There were elections.
So perhaps a middle school student council member might be also appropriate for that group if, and that would be, I, you don't want to get it, you know, up to 20 people.
Yeah.
But I do think you want the school, I mean, this is the school council's bailiwick sort of where they would recommend.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, you know, in particular, I walked into the last presentation, we had really not pro or against school uniforms, but I thought, oh, a little bit of an eye-roll conversation. And I was really, I, I thought it was really compelling and I thought the evidence of, you know, giving students one less thing to be distracted by is an important conversation. So if it's important to the administration and to the school committee to pursue this kind of policy, it's got to start on a conversation level about what's going to work in our community.
I, if you can determine the two school couns, uh, stu, school committee members, I'll work with the administration to get representatives and we'll pick a date.
Okay.
If that, if that is your wish.
That sounds great. Thank you.
I, I just want to suggest, and I don't want 20 people either, but at least two kids from each school or whatever.
Yeah.
More than one.
I think like a girl or a boy would be really important just to get the different perspectives.
That's a, that's a good idea.
And what about from the NES? A fifth grader or somebody?
I don't know.
A fifth grader.
I think talking about rolling us out in the elementary school, we've got to have input, I think.
Yeah. It could be like a fifth grader, eighth grader and like.
Two fifth graders.
Yeah. Like two of each, so it's like the oldest ones of the group.
That's 20 people.
That's, you're starting to.
I know, but I just don't think you can have one student because it's too much on them.
I don't, I don't know. We're just talking about ideas though, we're not asking.
But you want, hopefully to make it a good.
You've got about 15, you'd have about 15 people.
You really want, if you, if, if uniforms would be an idea that everyone wants, I feel like you should get the perspectives from everyone else so then they are like, oh, well, like you should get the perspectives from everyone else so then they are like, oh, well, it does actually sound like a good idea from a elementary to middle to high school perspective. Cause I think, if, if I was like the only student rep or someone else was the only student rep, they'd probably feel pressured into saying, yes, let's do it, or else they wouldn't really speak their mind.
Right. All right. Thank you. We'll work on that.
And I have one other thing that's not on my report, but, um, I have, um, been, been moving on trying to replace Mrs. Miller and, um, her, um, her retirement will be effective the end of December. And, um, so I have been in a series of interviews and involved the administrative team. Um, I've shared with you the resume of, um, Sheila Reardon and, uh, it's at the end of your, your packet that I gave out today. Um, and I think we're going to be very fortunate to bring, um, Dr. Reardon on. She, um, has extensive background in, uh, as a director of special services, as a principal, as a guidance counselor, and, um, that experience has been in Massachusetts, so I, I think. Um, and she has agreed to come on and overlap Nancy, um, starting on November 28th. So she'll be here for about a month with Nancy to sort of get the lay of the land and, and programs. And then, um, will take over on, you know, January 1st and has agreed to work through, um, August, which gives us, um, the, the safety net as we look for a new director of services. Um, so I'm, I'm very pleased to just bring her name to you tonight.
Great.
Um, we can get her over here for a meet and greet if you want at some point.
Or it would be great. Our first couple of days would be nice too. That'd be awesome. Um, thank you. So this, just to reiterate, this would be an interim solution while the search continues.
This is an interim. Yes, she has retired in, in Massachusetts, but, um, is not only willing, but excited to, um, come to Nantucket and, and take over.
And her license is still-
And her license is, and she's still licensed to him.
Fantastic.
That's all my report.
All right. Thank you. You're up.
Okay. So the winter formal that proposed or is going, hopefully is going to get passed. Uh, we're hoping to either do, we have, the VFW as an idea, the Boys and Girls Club and the Nantucket Hotel as potential places. We're gonna talk to them, um, and see if they're interested in, we're gonna try to sell it as the first annual winter formal for the high school and maybe they'll be interested in the years to come. Uh, also, uh, Spirit Week is going really well. Everyone really likes the days. And then we're planning for monthly movie nights in the auditorium, so it's something that everyone can go and do on a Friday night, especially in like the low winter months, like in March and stuff like that. And then hopefully we're gonna have a fun dodgeball tournament. Maybe the faculty or admin can get in on it, um, the last week before.
Bombardment.
But yeah, that's, that's what's going on in the student council.
Can you give us some ideas of, um, your days on Spirit Week?
So today was color day. Uh, aqua teal was for faculty. Mr. Lukenia is showing up.
Oh, very nice.
We were, seniors were black, so that's why I'm wearing my black Crocs and I would've worn nicer shoes. Uh, and everything was black and yesterday was twin day or multiple day. And then tomorrow's character day and then Thursday is lazy day, so sweatpants, sweatshirts, the whole nine. And then Friday, of course, is blue and white day. Sorry, everyone wore blue and white on Friday to support the whale. And come to the pep rally on Friday.
Awesome. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I just wanted to, um, point this out. I've, I've given you, um, a, a copy of the flyer for the dedication and Halloween costume dance at the elementary school on October 29th. The dedication of the, um, gym to Sally Roberts. So, uh, we invite you. It does say birth through fifth grade, um, but, uh, you asked if you could attend and I'm sure that anybody who, um, had Mrs. Robertson and a connection is welcome to attend and we would hope to have school committee members there.
In costume?
As well. In costume would be, would be wonderful.
Remember this is the Roberts family who has orchestrated, um, beyond the maiden ceremony. So I feel like, uh, I will do something and we've got a sign hanging and it's taped up and covered and that'll probably be around 3:30. We've invited the R and M to join us, um, but there are activities that will be going on. They want to be, to be.
Awesome. Very nice.
Yeah. I think it would be appropriate for the school committee to wear school uniforms on the 29th. Just, just a thought.
I think Sally would be for it. I, I think she would.
The 29th.
I think Sally would support a school uniform. School pride.
Two-week vacation.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.